By way of Ohio to us and then through Iowa State, he just graduated with his Will Justice degree from Iowa State last Friday. So he can go the last opening we have. And so we're very, very excited to have him.
You don't have a uniform that day?
Well, they're working on it.
Hey, next up, we have an update on Arts Advisory Board.
Hi there, Mayor and the Council and City staff. I wanted to give our update here for the year. First of all, I want to update on the movie. Everybody's asking about that. In late November, the Arts Board reached out to the production company and requested an update. At that time, they informed us that they have found another city, another town. So they're in production in another town. We, of course, wish them well, wish them the best, and thank them, thank them for considering us. We notified the city immediately and we checked in with the city attorney and since they've moved on to contractor agreement isn't all in void. So I think we just move on from there. Am I correct?
Are correct.
Yep. The only other thing I want to say for the record, people were asking about when Jack came back. He is now available on amazon.com to view their work. New point, but wanted to put that out there. I wanted to give a wrap up of what we've done in the past two years. Our role, our role as the Arts Board was to give out money and that seems like it's a really easy thing unless people don't ask for it. So we had to kind of go out to the arts community, which is individuals in our community. They're not grouped yet and they're trying to be. That's good. But so we had to go do that. I've mentioned this before here. The best way that we found out after the first year to do it was, first of all, music is always something that draws people together. Number two, let's do something that brings people together through music. So our Christmas show, we conceived the community Christmas celebration with the hope that we could start pulling our community together at least one time a year. As most of you know, last year it was rushed, it was pushed. We still had a packed house standing room only and it went very well. This year, we were handed the parade and the tree lighting along with the traditional tree lighting along with the Christmas show that we conceived. We shared the tree lighting with the CBB. Miss Blocker did a beautiful job and Mr. Mormon here, I think, wasn't it also Deb Franzemberg of the committee? They did a phenomenal job. It was just huge and people loved it. The tree lighting this year was unique and different. If you didn't see it, it was very Disney-esque. And it went over very well. I think there was an estimation between 1,000 to 1,500 people. I don't know how you estimate that because it's just the sidewalk was loaded. You know, there were some glitches, but that was our first year and there's no way outside to test all that sound equipment. So now we know. We hope to get it next year and do it again. Our community Christmas celebration or the show is what I wanted to let you all know. We had to do two shows this year in fear of having enough room if, when we gathered the tree lighting and combining this. Approximately 300 people, people attended the Christmas shows and that, that will only hold about 100 and something. And as long as they sat in chair, we were okay. So we, we had about 350 people attend, about an estimated 100 attended the, or 1,000 attended the parade. But like I said, in tree lighting, it could have been up to 1,500. We had over 50 children participate in this year's show and that's, children are very difficult because they're very busy in school at this time. And we had four of those were youth groups that, special needs groups that were looking for something to do. And in fact, the luminaries were all set up by, don't ask me the name. It was a Boone Edge program. It's under the umbrella of Boone Edge. But those kids were special needs and they were workhorses. They were phenomenal and it was a joy to work with that group of people. Approximately $450 was raised through the Salvation Army, which was our charity of choice. Over 400 of that was raised right here through the Christmas show. About 1,500 cups of cocoa, candy canes, bells, scarves, and presents were given away. Over 75 businesses, organizations, and groups participated in the celebration in some form or another. Approximately 15 businesses to date now have reached out to us and want to, want to join for next year already. The Boone County Historical Society actually wanted to come in on our celebration this year and they sold out of soup. I think they said 30 to 45 minutes before the event was over. So I guess that's a good thing. We had over 100 comments that have been shared with us so far, screenshots, comments, all positive. The only one constructive criticism that we got was they couldn't hear the music at the tree lighting, but they were clear back in the street. You know, we just need to crank it up. The biggest surprise, and I just want to share some of these with you. The biggest surprise was Jim Turvis, who rocked his theatrical debut. They, he was phenomenal. We missed him in the show. He, he did a great job and him and Santa had a bit and they loved him. He also narrated the tree lighting. So he was, he was a joy to work with and a lot of fun to have in the show. The most talked about was the choir, of course. People were surprised that that quality of music could come out of a mere 17 voices. And no, they did not have a vocal track support. So they were on their own. So they did, they worked hard. They did, I think, 27 rehearsals, almost three months of rehearsals. I do want to give, stand up, I do want to give Mrs. Grunstadt. I know some of you had her for a teacher, but you have no idea how professionally, how wonderful she is. She pulled out music out of people that haven't sang for years. The favorite comment so far was by one post that said, "The Boone Arts Advisory Board and all those involved knocked it out of the park this year." That was pretty good. The first place where the oohs and ahs at the tree lighting unfortunately wasn't the tree lighting, it was the confetti cannons. So I think if we double up on those next year, you know, we can, we can rock it. Second place was the lighting of the tree. The favorite comment that I've heard, or the number one comment was the tribute that we did to Mayor Slight. We didn't want to say our goodbyes to him and let him light the tree one last time. And that was, that was nice to hear. Other than that, it's been a joy to serve the city for two years. We have a lot of time. We have something, we have a lot going. There's grants and all that kind of stuff coming on. I'll pick up or written a report to you, you know, and so you can catch up on that. We've got some grants coming through that'll probably come through yet this fiscal year and the next, in January, February, March. But it's been a pleasure to serve. We were all, we had a good time for the most part. So we, we spent a good year and a half or a good, I'd say nine months just setting up the program and trying to feel the community out and feel how we can connect. So the connections have started through the Christmas celebration and I think that's good and I hope we can keep going. Any questions?
Do we get to hear Jim's bit?
Hear what?
You said he.
Oh, he's gonna come to the show. Yeah, you missed it. It was videotaped and we're, we're gonna check with the city. The choir would like to do a watch party. So if you missed it, that'd be good. Okay?
They did a, they did a fantastic job. They worked hard and, and it was really.
Sounds like a good job.
Thank you. It was fun to come out of retirement and use the skills we have. Thank you so much. I should say we're all retired old ladies too, by the way.
Yeah, but you don't act like it. I just want to echo too, that it was, was very well done. Lots of good comments. All the, everything from the parade to the tree lighting to the, the show to everything. I heard lots of great comments.
Very well. Okay, thank you. Okay, next up, a report of standing committees, policy administration, Linda.
I just want to say thank you to everyone who helped put on our appreciation lunch for the city employees. It was well attended and I just, I guess the thing that struck me was I looked around the room, which was full and thought, these are all the people that keep the city going. So I really was thrilled that we could do that and, and I hope we make it a tradition and do it again next year.
Thank you. Next up, public safety, David. No report, Your Honor. Utility Committee, Terry.
No report, Your Honor.
Economic Development, Terry.
Yeah, a couple of things. On December 8th, Bill and myself and David, along with three members of the School Board, Jeremy Pritchard, Julie Trippa, and Matt A. Elton You have that information in front of you. I put, I put a printout in front of you to view. We were totally impressed with what Capstone is doing down there with the schools, with the old vacant school. There's a picture in there that will show you that they also built apartment complexes right across the street. And that they plan on doing that at the pay, at the Lincoln site. They're going to convert that into 2028 apartments. They're not quite sure how they're gonna figure Lincoln. They're gonna tear down the futures building and they're gonna build two three-unit apartment one facing Marion, one facing Fourth with a green space and parking in the middle. On the page sites, a little different story. They can't quite configure that with a historical value in play. So they have to go to a more modern design. So that will be a little bit different, but that's another 22 to 28, all total about 110 units. Can't give you a timeline. He, he couldn't give us an exact timeline, but depending on how fast the school goes will determine that. But these are high-end apartments. They're big, they're spacious. They're, they have that really nice industrial look. They incorporate as much of the existing architecture in that as they possibly can. And they kind of remind you, David and I were talking about kind of that New York loft type of atmosphere. And this is not, I have to emphasize this because there's a lot of rumors going around. This is not LMI. This is market rate apartments. Okay. And it doesn't have anything to do with halfway house or whatever. That's a different capstone. This capstone is a housing developer. So it was pretty impressive. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer it. We'll have more additional details as this progresses. But they were very impressive. I don't know, Dave, if you have anything to add?
I was gonna say, I would absolutely have no trouble living in one. So.
And that's, that's the guide that I use when I look at these and we've looked at a lot. Would I live there? And if the answer is yes, then, you know, I think it's a good investment. So at least from my perspective.
And these are all apartments is what they're looking at?
Yes.
And what, two-bedroom, three-bedroom or?
Of them. They, they have some studios. They have two bedrooms. They have one bedrooms. I don't know if they had any three-bedroom.
Didn't sleep three in the places we went, but.
One and two bedrooms and then a couple of studios. Just depends on how that all configures because they have to meet certain requirements because of the historical side of it. So they have to configure all, everything has to have windows and they can't take out windows and stuff like that. So Lincoln will look like Lincoln. But it'll be an apartment.
One of the things they said too, to keep the historical aspect, they can't move windows or add windows or remove. So they have to work around what that is. So some of them will be huge, somewhere the gym is, maybe two stories inside, things like that. So.
Yeah. So like I said, David or Bill or myself could be answering any other questions you might have. So. Update on Central Iowa Housing Trust Fund for 2024, Brenda.
Hey, I'm gonna have Terry assist me here. Wanted to give you a recap first on our existing award from Central Iowa Housing Trust Fund. So we got that award earlier this year, calendar year, not fiscal year. And we had the Economic Development Committee score those applications. We got a few more applications after we closed out the official round. So I'm about five, I have other people at the office interested in we're do the funding round again. So we have everybody closed out. The gray line, just to refresh your memory, had already completed their project. And that came out with the certification that needed to be signed before we extended a contract that they were, it actually started or had been completed. So we're hoping there is $1,359 available. We're hoping to assist someone that needs a little bit of repair work that we can get that squeezed in yet this year. So pretty much our funds have been expensed. There is an open round for applications right now with Central Iowa Housing Trust Fund. It's a little different in terms of the match is higher than it was with the last round of funding. So those applications are due on January 15th. So I would be back to actually have you officially take action if you want to commit those funds, match funds and submit an application. I'll be back at the first council meeting, the first of January. So for example, if we were to request 80,000, that'd be a little bit more than we requested this go around. It would require a $20,000 match from the city. Realizing we're kind of in a little bit of a flux waiting for the, the notification from the assessor regarding projected tax proceeds for next fiscal year. So, but again, just to give you some idea, I believe that there's a great amount of need out there. When I'm back in January, I shared some of the comments that we've gotten from the folks that you're assisting with the funds. I'll also share some photos before and after. It was astonishing to me, some of the before photos, some of the work that needed to be done in these homes and the after pictures. So I know every dollar this city spends is important, but these are leveraging some federal funds and also as well as some personal funds and making a difference and increasing the safety and certainly the ability for folks to stay in the home. A number of the folks were disabled on supplemental social security. So they fall even at the lowest income levels in terms of support. So just wanted to give you that information, warn you that I'm gonna be back in January and I'll work with the Economic Development Committee and they'll to formally, if that's a doable sort of amount, but I think certainly if we were to kick off a fund early next year, that we'd have no, no problem pushing $100,000 out into the community for qualified applicants. So I welcome any questions you might have as it relates to the owner occupied current round of funding or the opportunity to apply for more funding next year. So again, these are folks that own their home and only available to those folks. And there's other programs out there for progress, but this is unique because it helps people that either own or have a mortgage on their house.
It's, it's a great program. We help a lot of.
As if they willingly made.
We can find some money somewhere, I'm sure. So.
So anyway, I'll be back in January and I'll stick around if there's other basic months.
Thank you. Terry, anything else?
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Number five, Department reports, Building Official, Dave Yates. Finance Officer, Andrea. City Attorney, Jim.
Your Honor, in 2012, one of the major reasons I applied to be a city attorney was the strong and effective leadership I saw you provide to this community. It's been an honor and a pleasure to have worked with you over the past decade plus. Thank you for your public service.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
That's all I have.
Director of Public Works, Waylon. Last Tuesday, we completed a walkthrough on the South Marion West Park Avenue paving project. I'm glad to tell you it is complete, other than a few minor punch list items. The signs have been taken down and traffic was moving on those streets. The sanitary sewer lining projects, the three different projects that we signed earlier this year, those are all complete also.
Nice. Engineering, Bill.
Thank you, sir. The first item is the planning and design loan application through SRF for rehabilitation of two ground storage reservoirs at the Boone Water Treatment Center. We've talked about this before. We, an application for the roofs at the water plant. This one is for the reservoirs. The amount of design and planning is $200,000. So this is a loan application through SRF for $200,000. I need approval from Mayor Slight to sign this application so Perry can get it into the state. And I'll ask you any questions, yeah?
Benson?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Wilson Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Engstrom?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
My second item is Resolution 3157 to enter into an agreement with the contractor for the line upon removal. As you know, we do that, we have two, we do it every other year. We budget for this every year. So we have money in the bank, so to speak, to pay for this project. The project total is $311,180. I would ask for approval of the resolution to allow me to sign the agreement.
Second.
Stein?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Wilson Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Engstrom?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes. Next up, public safety, Chief Adams.
Your Honor, a couple of quick updates. First of all, the fire station addition is nearing completion. Everything ready for certificates on the first media of January. The second thing is, is our fire truck due to holiday schedules and shutdowns there. And unfortunately, my availability to, when I can fly down there, has been pushed to the middle of January. Darn it. And so it'll be the middle of January before I fly down there to accept that completion of that. And third thing, I echo the same thing as Jim. Over the last 20 years, I appreciate everything that you've done for our department as my, and myself as either a firefighter or the fire chief and wish you the best in the year future.
Thank you very much.
It's not gonna take you two or three weeks to get home.
Well, you know, I got out of the kitchen.
Yes, Your Honor. Aside from hiring Sam this, this evening, last Friday, I was not able to attend the, your, the lunch you guys put on for us, and I appreciate that. I was attending Lexi Clark's graduation with Iowa Law Enforcement Academy. So she's back, she's working tonight. So we are getting closer and closer to being full staffed again. I mean, I guess on paper now we are full staff, but we have, she has to complete training. Officer Bryant has to complete his internal training and then obviously Sam's gonna have to go to the academy and complete our training, but we're, there's a light at the end of the tunnel for the first time and it seems like a long time now. So appreciate your support in getting, getting these officers hired. Last Thursday, we had our shop with a cop program. It was our 21st annual shop with a cop program. We took, I think the final number was 110 kids shopping. Each kid received $150 for necessities and clothes and toys. And then each kid was given a $50 grocery gift card on the way out the door. So all of that is, is 100% funded by donations from this community, both private citizens and businesses. And it's amazing the support that this has and the good that it does for these kids. We, we really work hard to pick kids that have a financial need. And, you know, really seeing the look on the parents' faces, honestly, this year, especially with that grocery gift card, that really just relieved them of a lot of stress in this holiday season. Again, thank you to the community and thank you to you guys. Anybody who donated or volunteered or anything, it's, it's amazing program for the city of Boone. And I'm happy to be a part of it and glad we can continue it on. So lastly, I also want to thank the mayor. Always had ours in the support of the mayor for the police department, my entire career. I remember walking, handing out flyers door to door on my days off. So thank you, sir, very much and, and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Secretary, Bill.
Okay, sir, I just have a couple items. The first, Andrea, can you put those up?
Pictures?
So we talked at the last council meeting about putting picture, the city bone on the, on the wall. And then since that time, I also had a conversation with Councilman Engstrom about maybe it'd be better to put it on the front of this desk. So I am truly looking for a decision tonight on which direction you would like to go.
I just think the desk is gonna not hinder the, you know, the ancient structure of this building.
I think, I think it's a great place for it.
Yeah.
What's that? In front of the desk.
Yeah, I'm fine. Me too, Wes. I like number one though, but for voting on the.
I like that one.
Let's see them again. That's number one. That's one.
I like number one on the front. That's what I like.
I, I don't know. I prefer it up there just because when people walk in.
It'll be noticeable.
Yeah. It's kind of front and center for the entire room. But it's just me.
Yes, number one on the wall.
I like it on the wall, number one, but that's my opinion. We're in agreement on one at least, I think, right?
Yeah, I like it on the wall.
Between one and three. Yeah, I haven't seen them personally.
That's three.
I mean, would these be a sticker or would they be painted on? There'd be plastic letters with double-sided tape so that I don't want to do anything to alter the wall. So it'd be double-sided tape with plastic plaque letters. So there's no drilling or anything like that.
So if we don't like it up there, we can always put it down here?
You know, council directs.
If it was up there, people were standing here for, getting their picture taken, it'd be behind them. Down here, don't know that it would really show. Bless they were.
It's soundless. Good.
It's like water jet cut. I mean.
What do you think? Anybody? Danny? Brad? Up here? Eldon? Carl, you have a vote?
One on the wall.
Yeah. Then you can, you know, when you're.
The wall is pointing across the partitions. Could be narrower. So it could fit in the middle there.
They're gonna go all the way across.
They're all gonna.
Yeah. The divider there.
Exactly why I let my wife pick. So from, from the audience, I got number one in the wall.
One on the wall.
Vote on that?
One on the wall.
One on the wall.
Yeah, it's not gonna be damaged. You want on the wall.
Yeah. There you go.
Danny.
Let's do number two. I'm just kidding. All right. Number one on the wall.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
My second item is I will let you know that we closed on the 15 acres on South Marion Street with Kaden property. We have taken that money, about $221,064 and placed that in a CD. Council can change that. If you, you want to drive me to do something different, but we hooked that was the best place to put it at this time till we figure out what we want to do with it at some point down the road. Good?
Yeah.
My last item. This is from council and staff presented to Honorable Mayor John Slight. For those folks that did, this is a gavel that he's used for 20 years. Coming up here, I figured he's sure gonna figure out that he doesn't have his gavel. Notice, I want you to.
Yeah, I saw you.
You can't make it up now. So we, staff and council present this to you for all your years of service. You've been an honor serving. So we, staff and council present this to you for all your years of service. You've been an honor serving.
Steve, your report.
Thank you, very much. Come back when we get the letters up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With the official picture.
Okay, next up, consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that you would like removed and discussed separately, and if not, I need a motion to approve?
Pro- approve.
Second, call the roll.
Mormon?
Yes.
Phil Saabak?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Engstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Okay, number seven, ordinances. A first reading ordinance twenty-three hundred to allow the city of Boone, Iowa to change the stop sign regulation on West Park Avenue and South Marion Street. Chapter sixty-five, section sixty-five point zero-two-five-seven.
So moved.
Second, call the roll.
Phil Saabak?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Engstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Okay, number eight, uh mayor's comments. I wanna thank everybody. Very nice words have been said, and I said this at our um get-together on Friday. I mean, I couldn't do it without, we've got the very best staff. I've always bragged about having the very best department heads. And I sincerely mean that. And I, when someone tells me, oh, something about the city, I mean, I get, it upsets me because I know how hard our city employees work, and I've had very best department heads, and I wanna point out, I've got some here this evening that used to be here. Luke Nelson up front here is city administrator in Norwalk. Everybody knows John Rouse. He was public works director, and then Wayne, it went, Luke stole Wayne. Took him to Norwalk and it's public works, right? So these are just some of the people I've worked with through the years, and I mean, I've hired virtually every department head. Um I've sworn in, I think, every police officer start, well, up to Mike Fraser. Over the last, so many firefighters. I can't say enough about the employees here, and I mean, I really do appreciate it. So thank you for all the kind words. It's been fun. And who knows, maybe I'll be back someday. Uh, number nine, council comments.
Just like to real quick, if I could, um not to get sappy on you, but uh one of the things that's always impressed me at the time I've, I counseled is you were always here swinging that gavel. Um I can remember precious few times that you weren't, maybe one COVID example, but that was it. And I always appreciated that, and I don't know what your voicemail says because I never heard it because you always answered the phone. So I true, very appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Any other council comments this evening? Any public comments for items not on the agenda? Of course.
Something Luke Nelson, Port twenty-three, Second Ward Drive, Norwalk. Supposed to do that right. Yeah, uh Mayor Slight, members of council, thank you for providing me uh time to speak. Today, I would like to give my deepest gratitude to a leader whose unwavering dedication has shaped this community for the past twenty years. Under Mayor Slight's guidance, Boone has thrived. To me, the word thrive means that a community continues to be safe, well-planned, with quality services and amenities. Many communities in Iowa fail to meet these core duties through financial crisis, floods, drought, and a pandemic. Just to name several challenges that you've dealt with. Mayor Slight has championed initiatives that transformed the mere ideas into vibrant realities. Here are just a few that come to mind. The new railroad overpass, farm progress show, reuse and renov- renovation of storefronts. The historical downtown fire that resulted in dilapidated building, leading to the city achieving a grant that resulted in demolition and ultimately establishment of a downtown park. Miles of critical sewer infrastructure through the heart of Boone right through downtown. Reconstruction of portions of underground Honey Creek, street improvements, a real structured maintenance program. Sidewalks with ADA accessibility, demolition of abandoned dilapidated structures, leading to rejuvenation of neighborhoods. Long-term structured annexation of the industrial park. One of my favorites, taking Boone from operating in the red to achieving solid financial reserves. There's a couple people in here that know the pain uh that the mayor went through on that. And the last thing that I will say, although there's many more, uh is strong emergency services. I agree with uh Chief Weeble that that was always a key dedication for the mayor. And not to mention, he's the second most vibrant person on Turbos AM radio show.
Thought we settled it was the third.
Uh, Mayor Slight understands that the essence of leadership lies in uplifting the voices of his staff and making decisions that benefit the entire community. But beyond the policies and projects lies a leader who epitomizes the spirit of service. Mayor Slight possesses an innate ability to listen, to truly listen, taking the time to understand. Today marks more than an acknowledgement of his tenure. It is a testament to his legacy. A legacy etched in the hearts of every citizen, a legacy of selflessness, dedication, and genuine care. As Mayor Slight embarks on a new chapter, my hope is that the city carries forward the culture he created. Remain united in your efforts to nurture this town, to uphold the principles you so ardently stood for, and to honor his unwavering commitment to progress in community. Mayor Slight, your legacy will forever grace the story of Boone and Central Iowa. For all that you have given, for the hope you've instilled, and for the countless lives you've touched, we thank Mayor Path, that has to be as bright as the mark you've left on our lives.
Thank you very much.
You know, after I heard that, I, I said it's always nice to go out on top, and I think you're, you're doing that.
Thank you. Yeah, and he played a big part as well, I will tell you. All these, all these people that worked for me, I say what really they did, and they, I mean, we would talk daily. He would call or I'd call, same, nothing's changed, Bill. We call every day, talk. We've always had a plan, didn't always agree for the most, and I would listen, you're right, because sometimes he'd have to, same with Bill. Go, okay, after I listened, I would, okay, I, I agree, but um but you can't do it unless you have a good team, and this is, this is a great team, so thank you. Appreciate that. Any other public comments? Not that this meeting is adjourned.